All right, call this meeting to order. Joining Fledgling Legends?
Fledgling Legends.
To the flag.
To the state of America. To the Republic of the United States. One nation under God. The US, the free and just one.
Okay, um, the school committee decided to call this meeting simply because the other day we started talking about technology and we ran out of time. Anyway, so comments and statements from the public? Anyone?
I just want everyone to know I'm here on my own time and on vacation. I don't want anybody to think that the district is paying me. That's all.
Never crossed my mind. Thanks, Bob.
No, but I just wanted to expose you for the viewers at home.
Good idea. Thank you. All right, so discuss transition for technology department proposal. Dr. Colley, you want to start?
Basically with Beth Lewis leaving, I've had several conversations with her trying to plan the transition going to having two tech direct, two technology people. Bob, who handles a lot of the systems piece and the networking piece. Ed, who handles software, computer fixing, and a lot of the updating of some of the equipment. Between the two of them, they do a good job, but when you lose the tech director, there's a lot of other pieces that fall off the job description. You can go with another tech director. I asked her to put down in her mind what her recommendations would be in terms of what should happen with her position. As she travels around and meets with other tech directors, I myself had spoken to a lot of superintendents and business people as to how they orchestrate the technology management systems in their districts. And the theme seems to be coming that less and less do you have technology directors that take on just about every aspect of technology? As the demands for more reporting, the demands for more technology in the schools, the change from paper-based curriculum materials to a lot of web or computer-based systems, that all kept falling on the shoulders of tech directors over the years. And as that happened, school districts began to add first people who deal with the network, people who deal with the computers and fixing them. More recently, what I've noticed is they either come up with secretaries to help the tech director to do a lot of the data management, or to actually hire somebody as a data management person. So I asked Beth to take a look at what she does, to write it down in detail, and then to give some recommendations. Her recommendations were written down, sent to you. She's basically saying, at least to get us through this year, maybe into the future, to perhaps hire and create the position of data manager. Somebody who can actually do a lot of the state reporting that's required and deal with the CIF projects, the Edwin Teaching and Learning, the Student Information Management System uploads, and the education, the educators' information upload. They all happen three, four times a year. October 1st is one of the biggest ones because that's the numbers that the state uses to derive Chapter 70. So with that in mind, we figure we come to the school committee to ask for that. Obviously, we wouldn't have enough funding to do tech director, data management, and technologists to worry about the network and the computers. So for now, her recommendation would be to do the tech director, have somebody who can handle a few of the other responsibilities of her position, including the buying, updating, E-rate, those kind of things, and then perhaps leave a little bit of money, perhaps in the form of stipends, for somebody to work with staff on integrating computers into the curriculum. Although, if you read a little further, she basically says, it could be that you may want to keep that and add somebody who's a technology integration specialist of some sort for the future, so that may go into next year's budget. Or keep the data position and go back to a director of technology position, somebody who has a bird's eye view of the system and can coordinate between those positions and the principals and the staff. So we figure we bring the recommendation before you and go with what you want.
I had a couple of questions as you were going through, because I see here we're discussing a transition for technology department proposal. Is that what this is, a proposal? And this is from Beth Lewis, the recently, or soon to be, her resignation's effective when? Friday. Okay, so it looks like, was this an email, a letter to you? Is there a date on this? I know in an earlier meeting, we had a job description for, it was in an envelope at last week's meeting.
I think you like five questions going on right now.
Quit? No, it's, I'm trying to identify what we're looking at. It's posted as a proposal, so I'm asking what the date of it was, and I'm asking if it's in fact done by Beth. I'd like, you know, that identified. And a good way to identify what Beth does is, is her job description that you passed out at the last meeting, right? It was in an envelope last Wednesday.
The job description was in the envelope?
It was on the blotter.
It was on the blotter.
It was next, it was on top of the envelope, on the blotter, and I don't know why that was there. Was that the current job description? Was that a new job description? I just, we're having proposals without dates, without titles, and so I'm just, to frame the conversation. There's not a lot of questions. I'm trying to frame a conversation. I do have a lot of questions.
Dr. Colley, Beth produced this report for the school committee for today, today's meeting. That was my understanding. She basically had those-
Well, it might have been your understanding, but there's nothing that identifies out here, so I have no idea what this was.
Well, I think Dr. Colley stated that earlier.
Can I just, in this it says, "As I leave Westport."
It's clearly written by Beth.
Melissa.
Um, so it's Beth's proposal. I didn't know it was a proposal. I thought it was a communication as she leaves Westport. That's like an exit interview typically. So that's, I'm just clarifying things. I do have a lot of questions, and I'll catch you in the next round.
Melissa.
Just a point of clarification, when you were talking, Dr. Colley, you said, you said, at least I heard, that Beth wanted to hire a technology director? Or were you, because when you were saying hiring a new person, you said technology director, but I don't know if you meant to say data administrator. So I'm just confused as to-
Data manager.
So a data, data manager. Are these-
But she basically said, you could do that in the short term. What she's finding is that many places, and even my research calling around to other superintendents, many places have a technology director. Some people don't call it that. Some people have it joined with other titles. But you have somebody who oversees the whole technology for the district, and they have a data person. So what she's recommending is hire the data person to get us through the year, and then perhaps consider leaving the technology director position in place, not filled, and then see what you can get, or what you would consider for budgeting purposes into the following year, to either go with a person that deals with teachers and how they integrate computers into the curriculum, or going back to hiring a tech director in addition to the data manager.
So, so these three positions that are listed here, because I'm a little, I have to say I'm a little confused with it too, because I don't know, you know, these three positions here, we do not currently have. That'd be the first question. And then if, if, I guess depending on how you answer that, because I see three, there's a network administrator, data coordinator, and tech director slash teacher support slash tech.
The net, the network administrator we do have.
Okay.
It's just whether that person would take on different duties that she would have at one point done while she was still here. So, in other words, the data person's not going to do everything she did. Who would take some of those roles and responsibilities that she had? That would be, one way to do it is to assign some of them to somebody like the network administrator we do have, so you can keep the system flowing. And then she said, on top of that, you could then hire a data management person, so that you can do all the SIMs reporting, making sure the data is correct, and then eventually you would need somebody to deal with the teachers. You mentioned that at one of our meetings.
So then out of the three positions, we have one whose job description is different than what's currently here.
Yes.
And then the other two positions we don't have.
No.
Correct? Okay. But then we also have a different position that duties are not integrated in this proposal.
Right. Because that person would continue doing what they're doing.
What's that person's job title?
Basically deals more with fixing tech computers, setting up new computers, setting up software in the computers, signing up people as users. That person wasn't included in this proposal because we weren't foreseeing that that person's job description would change.
So, I have a couple of questions. Those are actually on my list too. A couple of those that you mentioned, so thank you for clarifying some of that. With some of the questions that you answered to Melissa, could a good possibility for us to consider today be the creation of an interim datage manager, data manager, and then the creation of this team to go through the year, this data planning team that she had mentioned here, go through the year, look at what we are doing or where we want to be as a district, and then next year, address budget-wise. And in addition, if we added these, and I think you alluded to this, if we added these duties to the network administrator, that does mean that we need to go back and rewrite the, the job description for the network administrator, because these are not currently in his job description?
Unless they're added as a stipend.
Okay. Okay.
Because that would be more of a negotiation piece.
So it would just be like an additional-
Right.
Dr. C, I mean, I see what, you know, Beth's writing here, so in her absence, we put some of her duties onto the network administrator, and, you know, then we can deal with that, we can change that. And then, in lieu of hiring a new, another director that was doing everything that Beth was doing, which doesn't seem that we'd be able to find, established this new position, is data coordinator, which would do the reporting, which is important, obviously. But the part, but there's some of these items under the technology director, teacher support facilitator, basically the balance of what Beth, our technology director does now, yeah, I mean, provide teacher levels, I mean, the first one, provide teacher level support for our classroom technology. I mean, I can't see us going a year without someone, you know, I mean, I guess we could do it at a very basic level, maybe, you know, or, I don't know, I guess, but, I mean, do we want to go a whole year without really having somebody just to do that first item on that list of duties?
Well, would I like to go through a whole year without? No. But I'm also looking at the realities of the budget. If you add to the first position on the list, because without that position, again, it's one of those data, you know, system critical sets of duties, you know, figuring out what needs to be updated, getting the equipment, putting in the POs, working with me to figure out where the money's going to come from, we'll, we'll need that in a month or two when we start putting budgets together. When you take a look at the second position, the data position, that one we need immediately. A lot of the teachers we have, or many of the teachers we have, I'm not going to call them experts, but some know one program really well, somebody else knows another program really well, somebody else knows another program really well, because Beth did work with many of them. Are they experts? Could they answer every question? No. Could they be given stipends to do, like workshops after school for other teachers in the one they know very well, so that other people, you know, it's like, hold your questions, we're going to have a workshop on, you know, two Thursdays from now.
But I don't want to get stalled out in November, you know, December, January, you know, all these questions, all these unanswered issues, problems, whatever, aren't being answered, things are piling up, and, you know, they're not, kind of stall, and, oh, let's, well, it's, we're not going to do this this week, let's, you know, I mean, I don't want that to happen. I mean, it's, if we, if we were to move forward with, obviously rewriting the, you know, change of the network administrator's responsibilities, posting, creating this new position, this data coordinator, I mean, you're comfortable-
Would we have enough money for a third position?
But are you comfortable enough moving forward without that technology director, teacher support person?
Um, comfortable? No. Do we have enough money in the budget to address it fully this year? No.
Okay. Michelle, I didn't like-
I have a couple of questions. Looking at the list here, under the technology director, teacher support, technology facilitator, a lot of these seem very support-based, very, a lot of them are basic in the sense that some of it is just some basic support that's offered, like Moodle support, they're having trouble, or classroom support, maybe a printer is not, or something, I'm guessing. Some of this stuff, I see if we did create a district-wide technology planning team, I think some of this could fall into that, specifically, maybe like advice with hardware and software purchases. I would think if we, if we got a group together that consisted of these people, which includes the technology people here, that at least for the year-
The issue, the reason why she put that in there is exactly, I think it's been mentioned a couple of times, I can't remember who said it around the table, but it's the idea of how do you plan moving forward? Who's going to do what? What should we do? How far should we go? But the ones she's talking about underneath the tech director, you know, integration specialist, a lot of those are more hands-on or small group instruction. I don't think you can bring them to a group to have them do that. So for example, I have new teachers here at the high school who've never seen Moodle, don't know what it looks like, don't know what it does, yet everybody around them may be using Moodle to communicate with parents and kids and upload and download.
No, I understand that.
So who's going to show them how to do that?
No, but I see that. So I guess what I'm getting to is perhaps, because I realize, we can't have two new people here. I wish we could, in a perfect world, fill Beth's position, give the network administrator whatever we need to give, and also create the data management portion in a perfect world. I wish that's what we could do. However, the fact that we can't do that is a reality. Obviously, the support for PARC concerns me over this year, and that's something that you have here. That's a big concern, and that's in this list. But I'm wondering if there's a possibility for us to think outside the box for a year, and perhaps either, like, for example, take the provide support for Moodle. Perhaps we have a teacher who works with Moodle very well, knows the ins and outs of it, pay a small stipend to be that particular person. Or perhaps we develop a plan to create an internship with some of our high school seniors that may be wanting to go on to technology for, in their future, and perhaps they can-
Kind of like we did the website.
Perhaps they can get some hands-on senior project work or something, so, and get the kids in there too. So maybe we think outside the box a little bit to try to fill where we can, I'm hoping. Those are some things that are kind of coming to my head.
And that's why I said the stipend piece could be used in that way. You know, maybe somebody to supervise interns here at the high school, kids who are interested in that, who have the facility to learn, even if it just, they just learn one program so they can, you know, then get released to the elementary school to help the teachers when they have questions in that one program.
And they're also learning some basic skills on how to teach and whatever else, so.
Again, I have some comments, more than questions. I'd prefer just to have some time allotted rather than being counted in terms of the type inquiry I have, because that's disruptive to my thought process. I will say that we have something in front of us that clarification has been, that it's a proposal. Anyone looks at this, there are no options in this proposal. This is not a proposal, and I would strongly urge that we not create a position based on looking at a proposal, because this is many different options. It's good work, and I want to make sure we, that you extend a thank you for Ms. Lewis for putting this together. It's her thoughts upon exit, and I understand that. I have a real big concern with having made an investment well over a million dollars in technology, and we're in the middle of that investment, okay? It's a three-year plan that we basically committed to as a school committee, to spend funds to try to catch up with technology. We've had a resignation from the person who we assigned as, we, as, in making that decision. Part of that proposal was that the technology director would oversee that entire process, okay? I'm looking forward to the update of, of budget and technology to see where we're doing on implementation. And we're in a very difficult position right now in, in even considering eliminating a technology director position who has the responsibility of a one and a half million dollar implementation of technology. Second point to that fact that, which I don't see, you know, A, B, C, but this eliminate the technology director position, if you're going to eliminate it, you have to assign those responsibilities. That doesn't come through clearly in here, so we've enhanced our media departments at all the school levels. There, we made that decision, I assume, based on having a technology director for them to go to. Sure, it's time to revamp. We're going to need a leader in the technology area, and we don't need a position called an administrator dealing with the reporting. You know, I've looked at a lot of the options on, on the data reporting, which was identified as the key concern, that if, if, we have been told as a body that if, if we don't report the data, we will jeopardize state funding, okay? So, so this decision on who's going to enter the data certainly has to be addressed. I don't think it's an administrative position. You know, we're working on a twenty-year-old system, you told us, with MMS, I think it's called. Why are we finding out now? You know, it hasn't been prioritized before. I think we have to revisit a lot of these things. But currently, I think we have, and I've shared before, extensive expertise throughout many levels, including the superintendent's background in dealing with technology. You know, nine years ago, Dr. Colley, you, you were in this field? Computers in the classroom? It wasn't twenty years, it was nine years ago. So, let's, let's realize, we're, we're talking about eliminating the person who's responsible for the one and a half million dollar implementation of technology. We're talking about it, because we don't have that proposal in front of us, so I don't even see how we-
Go ahead.
That's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is, we're not eliminating the technology director, we're just not filling that slot, because we can't clone Beth. We can't find another Beth for the amount of money we have available to spend. So what I'm seeing is, we need to figure out this year, how we're going to get through the year, the data management piece is a piece that no one here can do, is what we're being told. And that needs to be done. So we need to put a data coordinator in place in order to handle that piece of the pie. We need to beef up the network administrators' duties and responsibilities in order to handle another piece of Beth's pie. And the piece on the last page, the page before the last, the in-classroom piece, the support piece, we're going to try and Band-Aid, because we don't have the money to hire that person. Beth did three jobs with the amount of money for one person. And we're not finding another Beth, it's just not happening. So we basically have to get through the year, and then look at our budget for next year to attack what we're going to do in the future. But we have to do something to get through this year. And hiring a technology director to fill all these things is not reality. So what I'm seeing is a plan to move forward, get us through the year, so that the major things don't fall through the cracks, and then we have this year to look at where we need to be next year. That's, that's what I am hearing, that's what I am seeing, and, you know, I think that Beth put together a direction that allows us to stumble through to next year with the limited monies that we have available to deal with her departure.
Yeah, like, you know, like many people in the district, you know, they all wear many hats. And, you know, it happens in private business, it happens in the public sector. You know, I think it's clear, I think it's, I think, you know, Dr. Colley, I think Beth's been telling us, I think it's clear to me that, yeah, we cannot replace her job, and I don't even know if, I mean, do we really want to hire somebody and give them all those responsibilities? I mean, just imagine the learning curve there. No one's suggesting getting rid of our technology director and somehow, you know, we're going to start from scratch. I think what this says is that we, and as far as the network administrator, we have a network administrator, we're just, we'll, we'll look into changing that job description and putting more responsibilities on that person. This is a current position. It's sitting right there.
You're saying we're looking at something, and I don't see that here. That's all I'm trying to-
This, this was a proposal, this is-
I'm asking you to point in paper here where it says to do what you just says.
I'll answer you. Hold on.
Okay, because it doesn't say that here.
So, all right, let me start over, for those who can't follow.
I hate to interrupt, I'm having trouble with this document.
These responsibilities, as I take it, the responsibilities that Beth would have add to the network administrator, the data coordinator's responsibilities, and the technology director, teacher support, teacher facilitator responsibilities, is basically what Beth does now. She does all these things. Is that correct? So the idea is to take a portion of what Beth did now-
That's why I asked-
-and assign it to the network administrator, which is a current position that we have. We may need to change that job description a little bit, or-
It's on page one.
Or do something.
No, I'm looking at the current job description.
And then the balance of Beth's duties, which include the reporting, we would fill by hiring and, and-
You're going to repeat yourself when he comes back?
No. We would fill by hiring a data coordinator, which leaves a balance of Beth's duties, her current duties. And, you know, like Dr. Colley is saying, you know, we would try to find people, or we would find people in the system now, or maybe even split those up some more, maybe give some more of that to the network administrator, or maybe give some of that to the other position we have, or maybe the new- Or maybe the new data coordinator could take on some of those responsibilities. But, I mean, I think it's clear that we, I don't think we're going to find someone to be able to do all these things, especially for what, you know, the monies we have available. And even if we did, I just think the, you know, I don't think we'd be able to, you know, the learning curve, you know, would be tremendous to get all this stuff filled. Melissa.
A few questions. One, where did we post this position and when and how much time did we give it to be, you know?
Which position, Melissa?
Well, the technology director position. Where was it posted and how many different resources, you know?
It was on school spring. And how long ago? I can probably find out. I think it was end of August.
So does school spring, do they send emails out? I mean, how do they get it? Do they just, is it on a website? Is it wasn't in Monster? Was it in, you know, newspapers, all of that so that multiple people seen it, you know, or was it on a?
Well, the other way we have tried to spread the word is word of mouth amongst all the superintendents that I know and the tech directors that Beth knows. The problem is, and it's sort of what Tony is alluding to, that getting somebody to come in from the outside, it's a steep learning curve unless you've been doing the job already. You know, what Mike said is true. It's been, I don't know, eleven, twelve years since I dealt with technology at all. Could I learn it? Yeah, it'll probably take me a year or two to get to where Beth was if I could even get there. The problem is if I were to go and put it out to the business world who in many cases don't necessarily understand how schools operate and what the requirements are within the schools, that learning curve will be even larger. So if you don't want to go through with the proposal, then I will go back and keep looking at all the people who've applied under the technology director posting. I'll keep looking and calling people to see if they're interested in coming over within the parameters of the budget that we have until we find somebody. You know, will somebody want to leave a current position to come here? Perhaps. Perhaps we could find somebody who's retired, who's been doing it the last year so they know what it takes, comes here. They'll still have a steep learning curve, learning our particular programs to do the reporting and some of the other things that we do. Could they do it? Yeah. It just, it takes time. Usually when you have planned exits, you know, people retire, you get six months, maybe a year to look and say, okay, do we start doing some of these things ahead of time, cross-training? Or you, you know, begin to post it way in advance so when you hire the person, they spend some time on the job with the person that's in the position.
So I think you answered my question. Thank you, Dr. Colley. I wanted to make sure that we had that out there. That was my main reason for asking the question.
It's still there. It's still posted.
Okay. And then the other questions, and I'll just say them, is it would have been helpful if we had the job descriptions of all of the people that we're talking about, the actual job descriptions, to be able to make a decision based on what, you know, the specific role, for example, you have a lot of duties here to add to the network administrator. We don't, I don't want to overburden someone so that, you know, we set them up for failure to be able to do a job that may or may not be. I have no idea if their current job is already two pages long and now we're expecting to add these things that are imperative to get done and now, you know, I don't want to do that to our current staff. And then also who's going to be providing direction? It's obvious that this is, as you say, such a very important position and I agree it is. How, who's going to be providing the very specific direction that's going to be needed for all of this? I mean, we're now going to have three staff, one of who's going to be new. Who's going to be providing that direction because it's a data coordinator, so I feel like we're missing that piece and that's a very important piece. And then you're also indicating, well, then we'll just save the position and potentially hire. So let's say we potentially have more money. I don't think people are going to want to put it in administration. I think they're going to want to put it in teaching in our classrooms. And while we can say, yes, this does fit within there and I agree and it's an important piece, how do we say, well, we're going to put more funds in administration and not in the classroom? And that's just a concern of mine to say we're going to add another position and then potentially fill the director's position after, so.
I mean, I tend to agree what you're saying, Melissa. For hiring a technology person, a data, you know, that is put in technology. I mean, we need to have those people to support any, any technology that we put in the classroom.
Could you clarify that, Tony? You mean the data administrator or the technology director?
Well, maybe not the data administrator, but the, you know, these are the technology positions. I mean, they all support our technology. I mean, without these guys and gals, we, I mean, we couldn't put it in the classroom without these people, is what I'm saying.
Actually, I had already hit my end.
That's fine. I just want to make sure you saw me. I don't care who goes first.
Yes, go ahead, Michael. And then.
I wanted to clarify. I did go request copies of the job descriptions because, again, we're looking at a proposal that came from, that is not the job descriptions. And we've made reference to it being what people do. That's in one person's view. The Department of Elementary Secondary Education makes it very clear that data reporting will not be a burden to the district. That's in a statement from the top chairperson of DESE, whatever his position is, right? So if we have had, we're talking about all this burden of data reporting and learning the programs and all and, you know, there is a contact at the state that handles our district and I wonder if she's been alerted that we're having a burden with this reporting. Secondly, so I, it, I don't think it's, should be a big financial burden as we're talking about realigning a budget to add a position. We do currently have some contact names. Dr. Dargan is the data warehouse contact person for the schools and has been. So it may be advantageous where she's the person responsible for the reporting. Our state profile, if you go on the town of Westport along with the hundred and seventy districts, who's in charge of our data warehouse, which is a fairly new concept, the central collection that the state does. They've promised that it's going to be no burden. If it is, well, we might need some help from them. But our contact person for the data warehouse, which is all our reporting, is Dr. Dargan. Is, is that going to change or is that?
No, we're still getting information requests from the state to be uploaded. And when I showed this to her, she says, that's what Beth does. So she is the contact person. She gets these and gives them to Beth.
I don't know what you're showing me, by the way.
Well, it's one of those requests that comes from the state. It's about the data for the Edwin Teaching and Learning, which basically was supposed to work through the SIFT agent, which Beth was trying to set up with the state, but that did not work at the state level. So now the Edwin Teaching and Learning people are requesting that the data be manually extracted from our system, sent to the folks at Edwin Teaching and Learning so they can upload it so that we can have access to the data. But when I showed this to Dr. Dargan, Dr. Dargan basically said, that's not something that I do or would ever know how to do. So she is the contact because she is the person who uses the data warehouse. But a user and a data uploader are two different people. Like, I can, I can go look at data from NCAS and any other data that we've uploaded to the state, but it doesn't mean that I know how to upload it and give it to the state so they can put it in their system so it becomes available to us.
Exactly. And that, so, I don't know what. We're getting into process, which isn't the area that we specialize in. When it comes to process, who does an entry? There's a lot of tasks that an organization does and certainly teaching is a big part of what we do, but there are other tasks here like entering data into an Edwin system. It sounds to me to be a task that it's important that we get done. It was falling apparently into the. The director of technology to take care of and we may have to shift that responsibility, but I don't see it's an administrative role because I see it as a clerical entry role. Someone's not, you know, we've got to extract data and enter it into a system for the Edwin people, if that's what you just, if I understood what you were just describing.
But you made it sound like she could do that.
No, I made it sound like I think we should hear from Dr. Dargan on this decision.
And that's what we're going to do is after Michelle.
I actually, two things. What Beth's job, does she spend, she, and I think this kind of alludes to the piece that you're talking about as well, which I do think is vital. And we have put so much into technology, as you've stated, and I, it kills me that we're, I feel like we're taking a step back by even looking at any of this. Is Beth in the class, the way I understand, she is doing some classroom work currently. So she does pick up some of that educational component as well as some of the administrative components. So my hope in looking, if we look at another tech director or in the now or the future, is that we can fill that piece with one person, the educational component and the administrative component potentially. Maybe with not all the other pieces that she had in there, maybe with more focus on the educational portion and pull some of these other things that she was doing and put them somewhere else. But that would be my hope either now or in the future because I agree, it's important. The other piece to that is while I think a job description might have been helpful in sort of laying out what's here, I have to be honest. I don't know that I could look at a job description for a network administrator and I, I mean, I am tech savvy, but I'm not network savvy. I don't know that I could look at a job description for a network administrator and look and see, do they have enough time to add these things or not? Because I would hope for direction from either those people that are doing the job or the people above them to maybe make that determination that this number of items is appropriate to add on for duties because I wouldn't be able to make that determination. So I was actually going to ask if maybe we could hear from them.
Yeah, so anyway, we have, we have our network administrator here. Have you seen, have you gone over this or?
Yeah, I just looked at it quickly, but if we could, I think you guys wanted to hear from Dr. Ann first.
Dr. Dargan, you want to chime in?
You may want to go to the microphone.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that you do and taking the time to hear a little bit more about the role of technology in the district. My most concerning important piece is student achievement and supporting the teachers in the classroom. And so if we start to look at the functions of Beth's roles and responsibilities, it really is supporting the teachers. And so, for instance, as Mr. Sullivan said, we've invested quite heavily in technology in the district and Beth goes directly into the classroom to support the students and the staff. So, for instance, we spent thousands of dollars on Achieve 3000. We're allotted three days of training. And so the staff alongside of Beth participate in the training. But as many of us, when we walk away from a training, we remember just small little snippets. So Beth's right there in the classroom, supporting the teachers on how to level set the students, how to pull reports and use that data to change and improve instruction. And so I feel that if we don't support the integrated technology piece, we've wasted a lot of the money that we've invested. I can tell you the data piece of it. Yesterday I shared with Dr. Colley, I got a little nervous and a little frightened because we're a pilot district for the Edwin Teaching and Learning and they had a little snafu at the department and they were looking for the data to be uploaded in a different venue, in a different fashion. I don't have that skill set to be able to do that. One of the proposals that I did suggest to Dr. Colley is perhaps taking a look at, I have a half-time secretary, perhaps making that secretary full-time, looking someone who has a real data numbers mindset and perhaps having that person be the responsible person for the data. I will work hand in hand with that person and invest in an integrated technology specialist who would work with the teachers. But I feel if we invest solely exclusively in the data coordinator position and leave our teachers hanging, then we've wasted a lot of the money that we've invested and I think that you will be hearing from the teachers if we don't continue to support them.
The proposal part.
Sorry.
Can you just repeat the proposal portion of that, what you just said, your half-time secretary?
So I have right now, I share a clerk, half-time special education, half-time works with me. My recommendation would be to make that person a full-time, make it a full-time position so that they could pick up the data input piece of this. And yes, it would be someone who would require some training, Mike up included. But we do know we have a relationship with neighboring districts who have systems management, support personnel in place. We would make that a top priority and then ultimately look at really filling the void within the classroom.
Can I just ask for clarification? Just to clarify, your, one of your thoughts is have, take the half-time current person, make that person full-time. Are you speaking of a particular person?
Not at all.
Or so this would have to be a posted?
Correct. However, I can tell you this past summer, we were interviewing several candidates because my half-time clerk position became available. And we interviewed several candidates at that point in time who had systems management, particularly from the banking industry, data management experience. Because the other half of the person who works with me is special education, they were looking more for someone who was familiar with the legalities of IEP, special education regulations, et cetera. So I know, you know, whether they're available or not now, I know that over the summer, there were potential candidates who could do pieces of this job.
So, Dr. Dargan, so this position that you're discussing, that would fill in this data coordinator position and your recommendation would be to, so this person could do this and let's put our money into the technology director support facilitator position.
oversee all of the software and the programs that we've invested heavily at this point in time. Our teachers, yes, we have wonderful teachers who are working very, very hard. So I'll give you an example. Sue Uvillera over at the middle school is offering two sessions this week after school for any teacher that wants to know how to enter grades into MMS as well as comments. And that's directly for our new teachers. However, many of our teachers are stepping up to the plate and already, you know, even with Beth here, run little mini workshops. The problem is, is when you're in the classroom in front of children and something happened, you can't wait two or three days for that support to be available in a training session after school. I'll give you another example. We ran a differential instruction class over the summer. We knew we were trying to move away from Moodle and use Google, our own in-house system now. But how did you set up a discussion board with that, going out to the particular classrooms for the teachers? I just feel that's such an integral part and it would be a loss if we didn't have that piece.
Kelly, then, Melissa.
So the person who does half-special ed, what would they do the other half? Because it's not the same person.
Correct.
So we make that person part-time?
There may be, there may be some movement within the district anyway. But that person right now hasn't been trained in ProTrax and some of the other systems, AIMS Web that we have available. So the person that I have right now has to have training anyway. So whether it's that person or a new person, it's somebody beginning anyway.
So you're suggesting we do hire somebody to basically become a data coordinator?
However, I think that you could do it with someone as a clerk or secretarial skills. And I'd rather see the money invested in an integrated technology specialist working with the teachers. The data is really, really important. However, I truly, my secretary in the past managed ProTrax. She managed the AIMS Web. She managed the AIMS Web. She received a stipend for pulling together the reports after hours for the teachers. So she was doing some of that job and function already as, as a clerk in the district.
Is Beth here?
No. Melissa, then to.
I just want to say thank you for, you know, talking with us. And then I just want to clarify, which is kind of the same lines as Carolina. So this position would half-time work for you as your administrative assistant or secretary and then half-time be the data input person?
It could be, it doesn't have to be the same person.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is that I would be able to oversee, I'd be able to work with that person.
But they'd have that direction.
In the business office because Beth and I did spend quite a bit of time together. Sometimes I would come up with the, you know, the idea on, okay, I want an electronic portfolio. I have no idea with the system we have, how to make that happen. But she would take the idea and say, okay, I, I can do this.
Well, you should have asked me.
Thank you.
Mr. Technology.
Carolina.
I just have concerns that based upon what's here, that the person you may be suggesting can't handle all of this. Because you sitting with Beth and Beth having her fountain of knowledge, yes, I can go off and do it and she could probably do it in half the time. But you sitting with somebody who's learning, has a learning curve and has to take all this on without having the past experience? That, that's why I asked for that. I would have concerns because as Michelle said, I don't know how long this takes. I'm not a data, I don't, I have no idea whether adding these eight things to his job, he's going to send him over the deep end or not. I'll hear from him and he can tell me whether he can manage this. But I have concerns about your proposal just because of the fact that you don't have any expertise and this new person would not be Beth. It would be somebody with much less than Beth.
I'm just talking about the data piece of it. And what I can tell you is in my last district, the superintendent secretary was the one that managed the EPMs, the SIMs, the data entry piece.
Data entry is different than uploading the email that you just got? Than taking the data, converting it?
It's all similar.
It's taking the SIMs data and it's converting it now to a different platform, but it's using the SIMs data that I don't have the training in.
All right, all right, but before we get too far ahead, Michelle and Dr. Colley, then I want to hear from my Bob.
I, I like, I like the sound. And we talked a little bit about doing something like that the other day. And what, and the discussion was, yes, that means you have to train somebody so the learning curve is there and do we want to take that chance? And that was discussion that we had the other day. But I, what I like about that is I am a person that believes that technology is extremely important for our students and it's important in the classrooms. I see it for my own daughter who's in college. There is technology everywhere for her. And we have to have trained students in order to be able to allow them to function when they go out and into the world. And we have put a lot of our monies into technology over the past few years and it scares me to not have somebody there to oversee the money that we've put in there. But I get concerned a little bit about, well, are we going to be able to get a person like that trained fast enough? For me, this is, the whole situation is really individually us deciding where do we feel, where do we feel our money is most important? And it really breaks down to that. We can't put it everywhere. We have to make a fundamental choice. Do we feel the management of the data is the piece that we want to make sure is in place? Or do we feel like the overseeing and educational component is the piece that we want to have in place? It's, to me, it's just deciding individually which piece.
Well, I think, I, I think Dr. Dargan was clear. I think she, I, in her opinion.
Well, in what her, I get it.
The technology in the classroom.
But each of us.
Yeah, well, it's more.
We five are voting, so.
All right, Dr. Colley.
Just trying to collect some of the pieces of the questions and conversations that are going on. When I called the other superintendents and around the surrounding districts to try to figure out how they've done it, and I know Beth did some of this as well, which is perhaps where some of her ideas came from. I find that they each do something slightly different. As technology has increased in each of the districts, each district has taken the people they have or they plan on the people they're going to hire and they put them in different positions and call them different titles. They may be academic in terms of being at the teacher level. They may be support staff, would be like in an FSMI kind of contract, or they may be administrative. So for example, you know, Kushner has a director of tech and they have a teacher technology support person. That person is like a teacher that goes between the schools and does the support piece. The technology director in that district does all the data, does all the budgeting, does all the running around fixing things. In another district, they have a director who does the coordination, the, the budgeting, that kind of piece, and then they have a data person that just does the data and then they have two technologists to go fix stuff. In another district, you have a technology director slash finance person who deals with the, you know, the hiring, the buying the computers, the coordination, the reporting. And then they also have a data manager who works for that person as a secretary and then technology people who go out and fix things out through the district. And another person, they have two technologists, a consultant, a data coordinator and a curriculum coordinator that deals with just the technology thing. When I was looking at this, again, I'm looking at the ramp-up time. Again, I would have no problem going back and hiring a tech director. It may take some time to find somebody who can do all those pieces and leave it the way it is. No problem. That's why this is a proposal because it would be a change from what we're doing. We can continue doing what we're doing. It may just take me some time to find somebody who can, has the skills to be able to do all the pieces. Or we could have a tech person take the technology piece out of the director position, give some of it to, you know, the techie people. Take a teaching position and make it a district-wide technology support that supports the piece that you guys are looking for that, I was saying, put it into the budget for next year and still have a data person. You can slice it 10 different ways. At this point, I'm looking at the technology data is exploding. Year after year, they're asking us for more. I think a position dedicated to that would be appropriate. If you want to support the classrooms, you can do it many different ways. One of them is to go back to a director technology position that doesn't have a laundry list of other things to do so they would have more time to spend in the classroom, but still do the coordination across the schools. Or you can hire at a teacher kind of level that would report to Dr. Dargan so she can do the coordination. My recommendation is still at this point to follow what Beth asked, to split the position for the time being and we put a teaching position into the budget for next year that goes directly to the classrooms and supports not just the other teachers, but the students.
All right, well, we have, we have Mr. Nagara here, so.
Are those the job descriptions by chance?
I didn't get them all, no. I was hoping for the, the ones.
Bob, you've had a chance to look over Beth's.
Human Resources bring in the public document. Don't, aren't job descriptions public documents?
Yeah, she just didn't copy the technology people.
I have the.
Who's the data administrator?
And the tech director. What's the data administrator?
This would be the proposed.
What are you posting?
The proposed.
Okay.
And this is the tech director.
Does it exist now?
Yeah, this is.
I, I was actually asking Dr. Colley, Carolina.
All right, hold on, you don't have the floor, Michael. Hold on.
Okay, but this was something I had asked before.
Look at it.
If it was delivered in, I'm just asking if these are current or if. Same question I had asked before.
Bob, you've had a chance to look over Beth's proposal.
Yes.
Could you chime in please on your, any ideas you may have? Building on what Dr. Dargan has said and, Dr. Colley, currently, yes, Beth is doing three jobs. However, there's a lot of stuff that goes behind the scenes. She'll have meetings with Dr. Dargan and say, for example, with the Achieve 3000 pilot we did at the middle school for grade five, she'll come to myself and our computer systems administrator and she'll be like, okay, we want to do this pilot, what do we need to do it? We'll go out, we'll size up the area. Because of my extensive background in the private industry and because of all the training I've had, I'm able to do a lot of the stuff in-house, do the wireless, for example, with Achieve 3000, do the wireless site survey, figure out what equipment we need, what's the best equipment for the amount of money that we can afford to spend, get the equipment in, get it configured and then work with her and the staff to make sure that that equipment is working and stuff. So as far as the hardware piece and where we need to go with technology and the hardware, I feel comfortable that with the current resources that we have between the two of us, we can handle that. I do agree with Dr. Dargan that we really do need the technology. We need a data coordinator because, I'll give you an example. Beth had a day off to go to a conference with Dr. Dargan and she sent me a text message in the morning about 6:30 and said at 8:00 a.m., MMS is going to call you, should only take about 30 minutes. You just got to do a couple of things for them. I sent her a text at quarter of five at night saying that we just finished. The data piece, as Dr. Colley and both Dr. Dargan has said, has become out of control and I know from my experience with other districts that they're in the same situation that we are. The state is constantly pushing these unfunded mandates for more and more student information and more and more data as they try to make decisions going forward. So as far as the data coordinator goes, I think that the data coordinator under Dr. Dargan is an excellent idea. And the technology integration person is where we're really lacking in the classroom. Sure, we can get out there usually within 24 hours, get the problem fixed. If a teacher's doing a lesson, a lot of times if it's for a lesson and they need service right away, we do try to get there right away. Where I think the technology integration specialist can be helpful is the fact that they can work with Dr. Dargan and work with the, as Beth called it, the district technology planning team. They can work with us and bring back to us, this is where we want to go, this is the software and then we'll on the backend handle the hardware and making it all work and everything. I hope that answers some of your questions. Melissa.
So just to kind of go off of some of the things that you said, one of my main concerns is regardless of which way we go, we only have right now one person who can do this. And no matter which way we go, we need to have at least two people who can, you know, like a backup person. Do you foresee, you know, either, with either plans, either yourself or your colleague, to be able to at least in an emergency, someone, you know, can't come into work because they have some sort of family emergency? You know, how can, how can we do some sort of backup plan? Because we're faced with a situation where we need to have a data person, you know, ASAP where, you know, is that a skill set that you feel that either you or your colleague would be able to somehow be a backup to this position or?
Data, because of where they're collecting it from, really is a position unto itself and I know other districts usually just have the one person for the data. And they're pulling data in from many different sources and coordinating it. So if the person's out sick for a day or two, not really a big deal unless the state report is done, is due that day. But hopefully, if they see the process from the beginning to the end, the data in the technology field we call as the data is clean. In other words, there's no errors with the data. And when it comes time to enter that data, then it's not really a big deal. But a lot of it is just the, I want to say overseeing of the entering of the data, making sure that all the data is right, making sure in MMS, I think currently we're sending 52 different fields to the schools, I mean to the schools, to the state. And that's 52 opportunities for something to be wrong in those fields per student. So it's just making sure and working at, with the building level that that data, like I said, is clean. Hope that answers your question. Bob, in, in Beth's proposal, the additional duties assigned to the network administrator, you know, I mean, some of these things, I don't even, I don't know what they are, but I'm sure you do. Is that something that, is that feasible? Do you feel comfortable with some, all, most of those suggestions, those duties? I do with most of them and the areas that I need a little bit of additional in training, I won't have a problem reaching out to another district, asking them for help and support because at all different levels, and that's one thing, when I came from private industry to the school system, the biggest thing that I know different, I noticed differently was that now other companies in your area, if you want to say other schools, they're not your competitor. So you're able to call them and work with them and they're more than happy to work with you. I mean, we've consulted with other school districts, other school districts have consulted with us, so. So and to, you know, what Michelle said, we don't want to set you or anyone up for failure by burning, burning them with too, you know, too many responsibilities, so. So if you're comfortable with, with this job description or these additional duties? I know how to ask for help when I'm here. The other thing too, in addition, at some point, maybe in the 2015, 2016 budget, we would really like to see an entry-level PC tech to help out with the service calls and stuff. As the data is getting more and more sophisticated and that whole pieces and as we've got all this technology in the classroom. More and more computers. It also requires a lot of maintenance. I'm looking in this room at the projector and we spend on a monthly basis about two, two hours per school per month just to go around and service all the projectors so they keep running and we're not wasting money on bolts by cleaning the filters. A lot of it is preventive maintenance and that's where we're lacking, you know. And if we had that additional, like I said, just an entry-level person to come in and do those kind of things for us, we could keep the classrooms running much better than we are now. And I must say, I'm proud of the work that we do and that's why I'm here today because I do support the district and the children in Westport. Thanks, Mike. Keep calling your mic today. Thanks, Bob. Okay. All right. I don't know, I think, I, I think it's clear, becoming clearer to me that we do shift some of these current responsibilities to our network administrator, change that job description. I like Dr. Dargan's idea of somehow having that, the data coordinator, you know, we could work with someone we have here or somehow, if we have to get somebody new for that, but we could share that, that person. And then I think which is clear from everyone is that we do put our money into a tech director, teacher support, you know, integration specialist, all that good stuff.
That's for you, Tommy.
Anyway, those are my thoughts on what I've heard here. Melissa.
The job description for the tech director would be different than what's currently here though. Is that correct?
I mean, if we go with what's on there.
Yes, based on, it wouldn't be the old one. It would be more so looking at that, that person who's in the classroom.
Right.
And now, and obviously that would be something that would probably get tweaked over, over some time. Bob? Basically what the district is doing is you're actually splitting the technology department into a hardware, wires, nuts and bolts, software, you know, not really software, but. The data piece and, yeah. The stuff that makes the district run, you know, that keeps all the equipment working, kind of like the maintenance department, you know, the stuff that keeps the building running. And then you've got the other piece that's really more curriculum, education-based. But the two would still work and collaborate together like technology and maintenance and that.
Okay.
So just trying to give you an analogy.
Thank you.
Carolina.
So how much money is in this half position that you own right now? 20, 30?
35.
About 35.
So that's full-time, what?
38.
No, 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 but.
So half and half.
Right, so it's about 20, let's say it's 20. So now we have 100, 80 plus 20. So now we have a hundred, eighty plus twenty.
Yeah.
Well, it's more than eighty.
But some of those technology director positions were less than eighty.
If you're at seven, if they do all the stuff, they're more than eighty. If they do less than that, like I said, of course, it has somebody who's had a teacher on it, they pay a lot of the teacher's contract.
Does anybody have a money tree?
So we could hire, we could theoretically beef the tech administrator, hire this data coordinator person, and put a teacher that just does the technology support in the classroom with a lot of finesse in it. We could potentially do that.
I'll take a look at how much is left in other parts of the budget. Very tight.
A couple of things. The most recent comment about the budget is, I thought this a budget discussion, you know, from, from the get-go, use a term that's becoming popular.
Are you teasing me, Michael?
No, I like that one. I just had to find a good place to use it. But, so it is a budgetary, absolutely. We've got tight times. We realize we've lost the technology director. This meeting was called to have some discussion on, on a proposal. I'm just wondering, what direction do you need from the school committee? Because what's ringing in my ear at this point is to quote one of our predecessors. In fact, he was on the board when I came in, but not to, to name names, to, to, don't get involved in the minutia. And right now, we're, we're starting to, to look at job descriptions and, and I, I think the core question that came before us, we're ready to answer, are we going to create a new position called data administrator? So maybe we, we want to, you know, address that and then have the superintendent put something else together for us. And while we can urge him to, to go in a direction, I don't think it's within our role, so, thank you.
Michelle.
Dr. Colley, if we weren't to create a, a new position in one person and were to go more, what has also been discussed with taking somebody that's maybe here or maybe not, but a half-time position and expanding it to a full-time position where there would be some dual duties in there, would you still need the creation of a position for us, or would it just at that point be a change in job description?
Do it at the secretarial level, then I, I could post it and see what's, what's available. Explain, you know, giving the job description basically of what's under data coordinator or data manager. Again, my concern is whether you would find somebody who'd come in at that level and would they have the skill or how much ramp-up time? While at the same time, I would keep the director of technology position open and see which one comes first.
I think to me, just to finish, just to respond, it's, if we're going to take a shot in the dark, where are we most willing, and yeah, I like to use phrases like that, Michael. It's the way I talk. You know, where would we rather put our money? And if something doesn't work, what's going to affect our district the most? And by that, I mean the kids. So if we put our money into the data administrator, hoping that we can Band-Aid the rest of it, and we don't successfully do that, the kids, in my opinion, are the ones, and the staff are the ones that end up suffering, if you will. I mean, obviously, but they're the ones that will pay the price at the end. If we go the other route and hopefully can get somebody in here and work really hard to get them up to speed on that data portion, maybe it will actually work. You know, and then if it doesn't, we'll deal with it. I mean, that's kind of, but we're not, I don't know, I, I just, I worry so much where we've put so much money into technology. I really do. I wish we could just pull back in here, talk around the stain, but I know that's not going to happen.
Try it then.
Okay. And it's going to sound like a broken record, but I, you know, we don't get the reports to Boston. We're, we get sanctioned, we get, if this piece falls, and I understand the classroom piece, I get it. But if this piece falls and we stumble on this, there are ramifications.
I know that.
Some of them financial. And we're already in the hole. So I worry about not making sure this piece marches forward. And then the other piece, maybe with a teacher in the classroom or whatever, is, and I got four kids in the school. I, believe me, I want the people in the classroom, that's not the issue here. It's, this piece to me seems, doesn't help the classroom, but if it doesn't happen, Boston comes down on our head. That's my concern, that's my major concern.
There's any right answer to this.
Melissa.
Or good answer.
No, I...
The computer systems administrator, they, they work on the MMS system, right? Their responsibility is to support and to maintain that?
What would you call that in terms of maintenance? That's the backend hardware, making sure the server's working, the backups are done. Making sure the operating system on Microsoft, we want Microsoft Windows Server, that's up to date.
So they're not fixing the errors that come out of the reports? Okay, thank you for that clarification.
All right, so I, we've got to keep this moving on. So do you need a motion, Dr. Colley? I mean, like I said, I think, I think adding some responsibilities to the network administrator's position, and then obviously dealing with that. Using, and maybe using part-time person, make that a full-time and coordinating, just make that a data person, and then put our money in the, I hate to say that, but advertise for the technology classroom integration. So if somebody wants to make that motion, I'm going to have to...
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Either one.
Take your pick.
Discussion.
Well, for discussion, I think that what we might consider, and I don't know if we would need to amend the amendment, part of your motion was to add to the network administrator's responsibilities. And we have a 2008 job description, which is the most current. I think what the motion might want to reflect is update the job description. I only say that because an update of a job description doesn't cost us anything. And I say that with all candor and honesty, and we may have to add in addition. But let's update everything that is done because, you know, I think we have some, technology moves quickly. So maybe we want to update the job descrip, and not just network administrator, but what's there, like, like the, the other one that was referenced.
So are you making that as an amendment?
Well, I think he's going to ask for it.
I, I would ask for the amendment if Karen understands what I'm asking for.
He just wants to update the, just add...
Update versus...
To discuss, well, we have a second on Mike's amendment.
Add and update, to update the job descriptions?
All positions, not update all technology job descriptions.
We have a second to Mike's amendment.
Second?
Well, she has to amend her, she has her motion on the floor, she has to amend hers.
No, I made a motion, she seconded.
No, 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 I made the motion.
You made the motion, you seconded.
I...
All right, well, then we have an amendment which was seconded.
My, my question is...
We have to vote on the amendment. So now it's a new motion.
Fine, but can I ask a question before we vote on the amendment? Your inference is we wouldn't have to increase salary if we updated. Is that what I heard you say? It doesn't cost us anything. Is that what I heard you say?
That's correct.
Okay. And I, I would vote against it.
Yeah, my, part of my, part of the discussion to your amendment is, I think either way, I, I think this is more than...
So update and add would maybe make sense.
Reclassify.
This, this is five years old. And technology, in five years, we've got two and a half million dollars to three million dollars in new technology.
We're changing the description as it is, so that's going to help, make it different.
Dr. Colley?
I think if you create new job descriptions, you should at least adjust the range of the new job description so it allows the superintendent at least a range to negotiate with him. Because if you're going to change somebody's job description and they're sitting in the job, they're going to say, "Nothing, Bob, but I'm speaking for you at this point." They may just say, you know, "If you're going to give me all that, I can probably go start looking somewhere else, to somewhere that will give me a more job, but will also give me a little bit more money." And I don't want to negotiate at this table, but at least, you know, say, and honestly, off the top of my head, I don't know what the range is for those positions, but I would just then add to the amendment, if you will, an increase of, I don't know, five, fifteen thousand dollars to the job description, to the job range, not knowing what it is or where he's at in the job range, and then we can talk about it later.
I, I wouldn't want to give a figure until I seen what we were starting from. Not saying that I'm opposed to it, but I would say, you know, looking to reclassify, update the job description and potentially reclassify. And then at such time when that happens, then take everything into account versus just arbitrarily picking a figure. Or, I mean, you probably know better than I do about female, but...
Then could you give me two minutes to go get the ranges for all these job classifications? So that we can actually do this well?
Hold on, we got to, let's, let's vote on this motion. We got, we have an amendment. Karen?
The original one was to add the network administrator.
Add two.
Add two.
Add two, the network administrator. With the part-time, the full-time data position. And then advertise for a technology, integrated, integration specialist. Okay. That motion was done by Carolina, seconded by Melissa.
I will withdraw my amendment and just leave that motion on the floor if we can just, if we can call data position, a data coordinator position, because that's where I thought we had ended up.
Yeah.
That's, I, I would leave that, that decision up to the powers that be.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I, I actually will withdraw my amendment because I, I like...
He actually likes it.
Okay, so then your amendment...
Has been withdrawn.
Has been withdrawn, but I want to make sure I have the amendment correct because I have to withdraw. I have to put it down, I have to withdraw. So basically, your amendment was to update the job descriptions for the tech positions. Is that basically what you were... Okay, and you make the motion, and it's going to be your second?
No one seconded it.
No, no, Melissa seconded it.
Melissa seconded it, and then he withdrew it.
Okay, so Melissa seconded it, okay, and then you're going to withdraw your amendment.
So, all in favor of the original motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to make another motion reflective on this discussion that we update all tech position job descriptions to more than one year old.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Makes sense to me, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right. Dr. Colley, you want to add anything else to, not, you've got, you've got, you've got some direction, so you, you'll come up with...
Can we take the range up on Wednesday? I mean, is that, do we have to do that right now where we can get...
Well, the problem is I have to post the range. I will start looking for whoever...
But we did the range on this one.
But it's different.
It's different now.
It's less now.
But you could cut it in half.
It's less.
You could take that and cut it in half, no?
Oh, I could take it and cut it in half, it's whether you can find somebody to do it.
We, we don't have to create a range because we're not creating on this position.
Right, no, I know.
We, we...
But he's looking for direction.
Well, I think that...
No, I, I, my assumption is this is not a new position, that you're going with a, and it's not even ask me. All these positions are exempt positions. Because this person's going to be dealing with, they're going to be dealing with what does...
They'll be salaried anyway.
Secretarial administrative assistant position. Okay.
Okay.
Does that answer it?
I think that answers the, the range question.
Well, I think, are you, you're still looking for the network piece?
I don't know where he falls in the range or whether we can come to an agreement of what the increase in job descriptions are.
That's why I was asking in...
And, and can I, can I ask for one more piece? And that is, if I don't find somebody who's appropriate, but in the meantime, because we have the director of technology position open, it's posted out there. And in the meantime, because again, you know, Beth's walking out on Friday, I'll try to interview anybody who looks like they have some of the skills in any of these positions, whether Beth's or the data person or, and then we'll, you know, I'll hopefully make a decision soon. But I didn't hear eliminate the director of technology position at this point. And again, I'm just concerned that at that lower level of a exempt secretary, basically, or administrative assistant, you may or may not get somebody who's...
Hold on, Dr. C, you're calling it the technology director, but...
Beth's position.
But it, but...
The motion was different.
We're changing it.
But this isn't an additional person, this isn't an additional person on the motion, the technology integrated systems person, that is the technology director. That's going to be the new technology director.
That's what I'm saying.
He's just using the old terminology.
I'm using the old name.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, I wouldn't...
This would be the new technology director, this is it.
So, yes, if this person walked in the door tomorrow and you felt you found someone, this person's filled in these shoes, you still have the other two parts of this, so, yes, okay. Anything else, anyone?
Well, I, if I could add to your conversation, I think that's where it stands now, unless we create... See, we've done name changes before on, on titles. Do we need to have a name change motion if we're not creating a position? In other words, if the technology director position needs a little different descriptors to attract the new type personnel that's out there, perhaps this integrated systems specialist position, I, I was hearing that kind of emerge from the conversation.
That, that's why I'm asking.
And, and...
I mean, the job description is going to determine what type of person applies, I mean. And what you put in that job description hopefully is what's going to bait us, you know.
But we can't advertise an integrated systems technologist, whether it's specialist or director, I don't know at this point. And maybe that's where...
Again, if all you're doing is filling out the data piece,
Right.
whether you want to call it a data manager at a higher rate of pay, or you want to call him an administrative assistant at a lower pay, rate of pay, you still have the other areas of what Beth used to do. Now, if we're going to give a bunch of that to the network administrator, then I'm going to be going out to look for somebody who does a lot less than what Beth did and leave the coordination to...
Yes.
And I think that's where the question of next Wednesday, next Wednesday, maybe we can take up at that point.
That's what I was asking.
No, Bob had his hand up.
I was just going to say that if you advertise for a technology director, you're going to attract clientele that is more than likely looking to oversee the whole piece, including the data as well as the hardware and software. Or if you go with the technology integration specialist, you're going to get somebody that's more career, classroom focused.
But back to Mike's point earlier, or somebody's point about, do we still, somebody still need to be a leader in that, in the whole technology, is it, is it this?
That was the last page of my proposal.
Well, I think that team is essential.
That's what I liked, I like that.
What, what piece did you like?
The last page, chaired by assistant superintendent, technology director. So she oversees this new person and whatever falls in.
Dr. Colley, you know which, which way, we want you to go around it.
Are you happy?
Still not clear, or?
I know you do, I know. I know you do, I know.
If what you're looking for is a secretary, let him do some of the network piece, and then a teacher, I can do that.
Okay. I think that's what we agreed to, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Hold on, we're calling the technology director now, is it going to be more of a teacher?
No, it's in the classroom, computer stuff.
I mean, basically, we're looking at, you know, Beth's proposal here, but instead of making the data coordinator, you know, a new position, we're basically going to roll those duties into, you know, an administrative support staff position, you know, that we have now, basically, we're just going to change or add those responsibilities to an existing position. Is that?
I just want.
So that was my motion, at least I thought.
Michelle's input on this question.
Michelle's got to go.
I know, but she can give, because you also were looking at this planning team. Now, where it says assistant superintendent in parentheses, it does say technology director, almost as if, I just want to confirm, is this the one assistant superintendent that we have?
Mm-hmm.
We're not talking about a third assistant superintendent.
What Beth envisioned was still to have the assistant superintendent.
That's not happening.
What Beth envisioned was to still have the assistant superintendent and a director of technology, that you would go back to hiring that person, you would just get that data person down and eventually come back and get a director of technology.
Well, I think what's emerging from this is actually that by having the three-person team working together in a facilitated meeting room chaired by the assistant superintendent, it sounds like a good direction.
I agree.
And so, thank you.
It's a start, it's a start.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Michael.